I'd like to call the City Council on January the 7th to order. Um, Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Kenneth? Schottmar?
Here.
Adam? Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh? Here. Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join in signing the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business that we have tonight is the election of the Vice Mayor. I will, uh, take nominations, open it up for nominations now, I suppose.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Mark Kenyon. Second.
Is there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, I will close the nominations and I guess we will take a-
You'll call the roll.
And, uh, we will take them.
And you, uh, vote by saying the alderman's name.
Okay. All right. Am I ready? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Kenyon.
Very good.
Patty?
Alderman Kenyon.
Schottmar?
Kenyon.
Long?
Alderman Kenyon.
Gray? Alderman Kenyon. Marsh?
Alderman Kenyon.
So congratulations, you have been elected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, next order of business is, uh, I believe, Adella, you have a report from the, uh, nominating committee?
Yes, the, um, Housing Authority Board of Commissioner, uh, Board of Commission elects their own, uh, uh, commission, uh, members, and they have sent to us the name of Karma Unruh, and that comes as a motion from the nomination committee.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Let's actually, what they, um, the nominee is great, she's actually, um, one of the, she's a resident representative, so I think that's really important, I'd like to thank the commission publicly for continuing to maintain a resident advocate on the commission, I think that's important.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long? Gray? Yes. Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, next order of business we have is the number three, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund and Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund Report to the Council. That will be done by me, and I am going to read the following reports. Okay, the Local Pension Fund Report, 2013. In keeping with statutory requirements, I am presenting this report, 2013, on the local police and fire retirement and relief funds for the city of Fayetteville. Both of these plans were closed by law in 1983, and there are no longer any active working members remaining. There are currently forty-five police and fifty-four fire retirees and beneficiaries in the system. In December 2013, projected expenses from the fire pension fund were approximately 1.4 million dollars, as compared to fund revenues of 950,000. Projected pension, police pension fund expenses were approximately 1.6 million, as compared to fund revenues in excess of 1.1 million. This is before adjusting investments to market pay. However, on a cash flow basis, contributions are not covering expenses. Actuarial evaluations are the responsibility of the State of Arkansas Fire and Police Pension Review Board. The last evaluations completed were as of July 2013, for the year ending December 31st, 2012. Based on those evaluations, the unfunded pension obligations of the police and fire funds were 8.1 million and 10.5 million respectively, and have grown considerably from prior years. The unfunded actuarially accrued liabilities for these funds were approximately 12.9 million for police and 15 million for fire. And the annual reports issued by the Arkansas Pension Review Board in either the fire or police pension fund were found to be actuarially sound pursuant to establish financial test. Again, this actual evaluation is for, is for the 2012 fiscal year, not 2013. On October the 18th, 2010, representatives of the Pension Review Board came to Fayetteville to present a special report on the fire pension fund. Both fire pension board members and city council members attended the meeting when this report was presented. During that presentation, the PRB board actuary indicated that the fund ran a 90% risk of ruin within the next five to 10 years, and condition, had, conditions have not improved since then. The fire pension board has again received correspondence in 2013 advising the board of the fund's risky financial condition. In 2012, operating conditions of the fire pension fund have been relatively the same, so no improvement has been made. However, the asset value of the fund has fallen to under 5 million dollars, which makes it subject to further investment restrictions. These restrictions no longer allow investments in individual securities. Investments will be limited to cash, cash equivalents, government bonds, and no load mutual funds. This means overall returns in the future are likely to be less than previously experienced, which could bring about depletion of the fund even earlier unless the pension board does something. The fire pension board has been aware of the unstable condition of the fund and has been discussing the situation and possible options since 2009, but has not decided on a plan of action supported by the majority of the board. The primary option which has been discussed is the possible reduction of current benefits. The city clerk and I have, have each introduced motions and had numerous votes to reduce the benefits, but all votes to do so up to this point in time have failed. The pension board has also been advised that there is no specific enabling legislation to reduce benefits, and legal issues might prevent that option. All other options presented would require substantial financial contributions by the city. However, the city attorney has advised the pension board and the city that the city has no direct obligation to fund the pension plan, other than the .4 mil dedicated levy for each plus state insurance turn back. The PRB has continued to classify the fire pension fund as projected insolvent. The police pension fund is also considered actuarially unsound, but not in immediate danger of becoming insolvent. The police pension board is also aware of the police pension fund status and has been considering options that would guarantee long-term solvency. I will continue to monitor these pension funds in the future and keep you apprised of any new developments. Thank you. What questions do you have?
Mayor, I have just one comment, uh, if you would allow me to. Uh, I do not believe that the city is currently, uh, responsible, uh, for any of the shortfalls from these closed pension plans. However, state law can change. There have been bills introduced in past legislatures that would have required the city to have this, the pension plans join with the state law to plan, which then would require the city to spend millions of dollars, because at that point we would become liable for those plans. We have been able, uh, with the help of our state legislature representatives from Fayetteville and other places, to prevent those acts, I mean, those bills from becoming acts and becoming law. But that's not to say that in the future, there might be a state law change, which would then require, uh, the citizens of Fayetteville to spend money in order to, uh, make these funds more actuarially sound. At the current time, I do not think that is the law. I also, in consulting, uh, and advising the board, said that as my opinion, they, that they could, in fact, reduce the benefits in order to save their trust funds. The Attorney General disagrees with me on that. Uh, so, at this point in time, you've got two lawyers that don't say the same thing. But, anyway, I, I wanted to bring that, uh, to your attention, that even though now I think we're not liable, it is possible in the future the state legislature could change the law and make us liable.
Paul, do you have any comments you want to make on it? I know he sits in those meetings as well. Or Sondra?
Well, I want to be clear, I'm not a financial advisor for pension boards either, but, uh, summary of what the mayor had said is in fact accurate. There's some severe problems, it's not a good situation for anybody, but, uh, other than a reduction of benefits, it's talking about very, very large inflows of cash, uh, from the city which we currently can't afford. And I, we, we would be in a position where we would have to take, uh, and look at reducing, uh, salaries or something large of that nature, just to fund these additional costs. So right at this point of time, it's, um, a situation that the, uh, pension, fire pension board has not come to grips with a solution, uh, and this is just where we are. At this point, there's no easy fix to the, uh, to the current status. So I guess that's all I would have to say about it.
Any comments, questions? Okay. All right. We're moving along to the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the December 17th, 2013 City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, water and sewer operations facility rain garden. Resolution to approve and accept a grant up to $2,800 to pay for the installation of a rain garden at the city water and sewer operations facility, and to approve the attached budget adjustment. Number three, rain garden project. Resolution to approve and accept six grant awards from the rain garden project in the amount of up to $15,000 to pay for the installation of four rain gardens at the Nolan wastewater plant, and two rain gardens at the West Side wastewater plant, and to approve the attached budget adjustment. Number four, Stevens Incorporated, resolution to approve a contract Stevens Incorporated to approve bond underwriting and related services needed through December 31st, 2018. Number five, Kootok Rock LLP, a resolution to approve a contract Kootok Rock LLP to approve bond council services needed through December 31st, 2018. Number six, bid number 14-02 Asphalt Striding Service LLC. Resolution awarding bid number 14-02 and authorizing the purchase from Asphalt Striding Service LLC of reflectorized paint markings in variable amounts with the Transportation Division as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Number seven, bid number 14-03 Curved and Gutter Construction. Resolution to award bid number 14-03 and authorizing the purchase of Curved and Gutter Construction and Sweacher Construction Incorporated as primary supplier, and Paupman Enterprises Incorporated as secondary supplier of variable amounts of Curved and Gutter Construction, and authorizing the use of other bidders based upon price and availability through 2014. Number eight, bid number 14-04 Hillside Gravel, resolution awarding bid number 14-04, and authorizing the purchase of Hillside Gravel from Limiting and Sun Trucking Incorporated for materials picked up, and Les Rogers Incorporated for materials delivered for variable unit amounts, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of the year 2014. Number nine, bid number 14-05 Concrete. Resolution awarding bid number 14-05 and authorizing the purchase of concrete from Two Concrete Company as a primary supplier, and Beaver Lake Concrete Incorporated as secondary supplier in variable amounts, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the, end of calendar year 2014. Number 10, bid number 14-06 Truck Hauling Services, a resol, resolution awarding bid number 14-06, and authorizing the purchase of truck hauling services from Les Rogers Incorporated as primary supplier, and Limiting and Sun Trucking as secondary supplier for variable unit amounts, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Number 11, bid number 14-07 Aggregate Materials, resolution awarding bid number 14-07 and authorizing the purchase of aggregate materials for varying unit prices from various vendors as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Number 12, bid number 14-09 Drainage Pipe, resolution awarding bid number 14-09 and authorizing the purchase of drainage pipe for varying unit prices from various vendors as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Let's see. Number 13, bid number 14-10 Crust Rock Salt, resolution awarding bid number 14-10 and authorizing the purchase of crushed rock salt from North American Salt Company in the amount of $76.16 per ton, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Number 14, bid number 14-11 Topsoil, resolution awarding bid number 14-11, and authorizing the purchase of topsoil from Les Rogers Incorporated in the amount of $10.69 per cubic yard in variable amounts, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed in the calendar year 2014. Number 15, Arkansas Fire Wise Grant, resolution to accept the Arkansas Fire Wise Grant for 2013 in the amount of $500 to be used for minor equipment and to approve budget adjustment. Number 16, Clinton Foundations Building retrofit home energy affordability loan program. Resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with and to pay $5,000 to the Clinton Foundations Building retrofit home energy affordability loan program, and to approve a budget adjustment. You don't feel I messed up on that, did you? All right. Seventeen, Plant Moran PLLC, a resolution to approve a contract Plant Moran PLLC for information technology services in the amount of $101,400. Number 18, Men Resolution Number 144-13 Humont Developers, a resolution to Men Resolution Number 114-13, which had approved an amended agreement with Humont Developers to allow access to city of Fayetteville sewage system in order to approve a second amended agreement. And number 19, ADM 13-4566, 3145 West Salem Road, Raven Lane Amendment, a resolution for ADM 13-4566, admitting the master street plan relocating Raven Lane, a collector's street approximately 150 feet to the east of the existing residence, 3145 Salem Road, as described and depicted in the attached map. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda-
Don't move. Second.
We have motion to second to pass the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, on unfinished business, we have RZN 13-4538 Razorback Road Victory Compassion. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4538 for approximately 5.09 acres, located at 731 South Razorback Road from I-1 Heavy Commercial and Light Industrial to UT Urban Thoroughfare. I'll entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So, uh, second.
We have motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4538 for approximately five acres located at 731 South Razorback Road, from heavy commercial and light industrial to urban thoroughfare.
All right. Anything new on this?
Mayor, I did not present this item at the last, um, City Council meeting, but Appleton could not be here. He also left a, um, memo in front of you, an email in front of you, he could not be here tonight, and would request this be left, uh, for a meeting, um, at least three weeks away, so he would not be able to be present at the next meeting either, so it'd be up to you whether to leave this on, uh, for our third reading, that, to that meeting and table it, or you could table it for four weeks, um, to the first meeting in February, whichever you prefer.
I'm gonna retable it to the first meeting in February.
I have motion to second to table it. It's a four weeks, too, isn't it, so?
Four weeks?
Four weeks.
So that'd be the second meeting in February?
First.
That's, that's enough time?
Yeah, he, he said at least three weeks.
You're right.
Okay. So, first meeting in February?
Yes, sir.
All right.
First.
First. First meeting in February.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business, we have, number one, 2014 asphalt materials. An ordinance waiving requirements of formal competitive bidding during calendar year 2014 for the purchase of asphalt materials for use by the Transportation Division, but requiring informal quarterly bids or quotes.
Whereas the crude oil market continues to experience price volatile, volatility, and whereas this volatility makes normal competitive bidding procedures unworkable, impractical, and not feasible, and whereas the Transportation Division proposes to solicit and accept bids on a quarterly basis without the need for further approval of the City Council through the calendar year of 2014. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where annual competitive bidding is not feasible or practical, and therefore, through calendar year 2014, waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding for the purchase of asphalt materials, and authorizes the Transportation Division to solicit informal bids or quotes on a quarterly basis without the need for further approval of the City Council.
Here.
Well, Mayor, Council, that pretty well sums it up. Uh, this is just due to the, uh, all due to the oil market, it changes enough that they won't bid for that one-year period. So, we do still solicit bids from all the major asphalt companies in the area, and then we go with the lowest bidder every time. It just saves us from having to be here four times a year instead of once. That's it.
Any questions? I'll ask. All right. Any public comment on this? Seeing now, bring it back to the council.
Motion to move to second reading.
Second.
We have motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding during calendar year 2014 for the purchase of asphalt materials for use by the Transportation Division, but requiring informal quarterly bids or quotes.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Number two, Watershed Conservation Resource Center memorandum of understanding. An ordinance waiving requirements of primary competitive bidding and approving a five-year memorandum of understanding with the Watershed Conservation Resource Center to jointly seek funding and to use such funding to design and construct stream restoration projects. Chair.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville has long worked with the Watershed Conservation Resource Center, which is WCRC, and funded quality stream restoration projects successfully completed by the center. And whereas the provisions of the attached memorandum of understanding meet the city of Fayetteville's need for continuing stream restoration projects at little or no cost to the city. And whereas the Watershed Conservation Resource Center can efficiently and effectively provide this service at a significant savings to the citizens of Fayetteville. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore, it waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a memorandum of understanding marked Exhibit A attached here, too, and made apart hereof, between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Watershed Conservation Resource Center to jointly seek funding and use such funding to design and construct stream restoration projects, and authorizes Mayor Jordan to sign such memorandum.
Sir.
Uh, this, this is a continuation of a previous MOU between the city and WCRC, and the WCRC's main task is just to look for funding for stream restorations and water quality improvement projects, and then we implement the projects, um, as a team. And, um, Sandy Formica is the, uh, executive director, and she's here tonight if you should have any questions for her.
Okay.
I will fix that tomorrow.
Sandy, you have any?
Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
You all do wonderful work.
Thank you. You guys are wonderful to work with, too.
So, any questions, comments?
Well, I know from the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee, we certainly appreciate what you do to protect the watershed, and, uh, this has not come before the committee because we're meeting Thursday, but I know with our past experience with your organization that it, uh, we certainly have a deep appreciation for our relationship.
Thank you.
Okay. I have, any public comment on this? All right. Bring it back to the council.
I move that we, uh, pass the ordinance as presented.
Well, I need a motion to second to go to the second reading.
Oh, we're in the second. I move we, uh, suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number three, Vacation 13-4544, Harveys Hill Center and Duncan. An ordinance approving Vacation 13-4544 submitted by McClellan Consulting Engineers, properly located at the intersection of West Center Street and South Hill Avenue to vacate a utility easement.
Whereas the City Council has authority under ACA Section 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following described utility easement as shown in Exhibit B attached. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval, and shall not be in effect until the conditions are met. Number 1, any relocation or damage to utilities shall be at the owner or developer's expense. And number 2, a new sanitary sewer line shall be installed as currently proposed with the Harveys Hill Development to provide sewer to this site. The proposed sewer line shall enter the existing manhole at no less than a 90 degrees from the outgoing sewer.
Chair.
This is a utility vacation request in anticipation of a future development project. Uh, this is at the southwest corner of Center Street and South Hill Avenue, south of University of Arkansas. Um, it's an existing 25-foot general utility easement, it does have a sewer line within that utility easement currently, and that's why you see the condition of approval, that a new sanitary sewer line shall be installed, um, before this is officially vacated. Um, staff did review this with all city utility departments and franchise utilities, and there were no objections, and the planning commission forwarded it to you with a vote of seven to zero.
What questions do we have, the chairman? What public comment do we have on this? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council.
Do we suspend the rules and go to the second readings?
Second.
Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 13-4544 submitted by McClellan Consulting Engineers, for properly located at the intersection of West Center Street and South Hill Avenue, to vacate a utility easement.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
We have motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number three, Vacation 13-4544, Harveys Hill Center and Duncan. An ordinance approving Vacation 13-4544 submitted by McClellan Consulting Engineers, properly located at the intersection of West Center Street and South Hill Avenue, to vacate a utility easement.
I move to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
We have motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
the condition of approval, that a new sanitary sewer line shall be installed before this is officially vacated. Staff did review this with all city utility departments and franchise utilities, and there were no objections, and the Planning Commission forwarded it to you with a vote of seven to zero.
What questions do we have from the Chairman? What public comment do we have on this? See now I'll bring it back to the Council.
Do we suspend the rules and go to the second readings?
Second.
Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 13-4544 submitted by McClellan Consulting Engineers, for properly located at the intersection of West Center Street and South Hill Avenue, to vacate a utility easement.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
A motion, second, go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 13-4544 submitted by McClellan Consulting Engineers, for properly located at the intersection of West Center Street and South Hill Avenue, to vacate a utility easement.
Any final comments from the Council? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number four, RZN 13-4546, 4377 Huntsville Road, Baldwin Church of Christ. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4546 for approximately 2.07 acres, located at 4377 Huntsville Road, RSF4 residential single-family, four units per acre to P1 institutional.
Chair.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RSF4 residential single-family, four units per acre to P1 institutional, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here too and made apart hereof. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1 above.
Chairman, the Baldwin Church of Christ has been located on East Huntsville Road for more than 60 years. This is the property on which it's located, it's about two acres. It's currently zoned RSF4 residential single-family, four units per acre. Obviously, that's not a typical zoning for a church. P1 is your more typical zoning, which is our institutional zoning district. This is a request to rezone that particular property, P1, to bring it into conformance with our zoning code. Institutional uses, we feel are consistent with residential neighborhood areas, which is what our City Plan 2030 indicates. It's a low-intensity type of use, and we feel it would be a compatible part of the neighborhood since it's been there since before a lot of the neighborhood was actually there, it's grown up around it. The Planning Commission agreed and afforded this to you with the recommendation of eight to zero, and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning.
Okay, is there anyone from the development side of this who wants to speak on this issue? Okay, what's your thoughts, Council?
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
I mean, they've been there 60 years. Pretty much, we know where they are, we know what they're doing.
That's very good, Mark. Yes, you're absolutely right. We have a motion, second, go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4546 for approximately two acres located at 4377 Huntsville Road, from residential single-family, four units per acre to institutional.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4546 for approximately two acres located at 4377 Huntsville Road, from residential single-family, four units per acre to institutional.
Any final comments from the Council on this? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number five, RZN 13-4547, MLK Beachwood, Easton. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4547 for approximately 1.54 acres located at 1541, 1555, 1561 Martin Luther King Boulevard from I-1 heavy commercial, light industrial to CS Community Services.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from heavy commercial, light industrial to community services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here too and made apart hereof. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Okay, Chairman.
This is an acre and a half on the south side of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It's bounded also by Farmington Street and Arbuckle Lane, which are two very small streets south of MLK. These are east of Beachwood and west of Razorback Road. It's also north of a trail connection that we have planned in this particular area and that our Transportation Department is currently constructing. The request is to rezone the property to community services. It's currently zoned I-1 light industrial and heavy commercial. Our feature land use map on City Plan 2030 shows this as an urban center area, which would support a community services designation. These types of areas are typified by their location adjacent to major thoroughfares and also are driven by more of an urban form, which this applicant is proposing to utilize. We feel this would be compatible with this particular development pattern, and particularly consistent with the City of Fayetteville's 2030 goals, and are recommending in favor of the request.
Okay. All right, what questions does the Council have? Anything? It's a pretty looking project, actually. Any public comment on this? See now I'm right back to the Council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion, second, to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4547 for approximately an acre and a half located at 1541, 1555, and 1561 Martin Luther King Boulevard, from heavy commercial, light industrial to community services.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the third and final reading.
Second.
A motion, second, to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4547 for approximately an acre and a half located at 1541, 1555, and 1561 Martin Luther King Boulevard, from heavy commercial, light industrial to community services.
Any final comments from the Council? All right, Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number six, RZN 13-4548, McMillan Estates. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4548 for approximately 19.61 acres located at southeast corner of I-540 and Weddington Drive from C2 Thoroughfare Commercial to UT Urban Thoroughfare.
Chair.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from thoroughfare commercial to urban thoroughfare, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here too and made apart hereof. And section two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Chairman.
This is a property located on the southeast corner of the Weddington Drive-I-540 interchange. Back in the early 2000s, the property was developed as a commercial subdivision called McMillan Estates. Several lots, all zoned C2 thoroughfare commercial. This particular applicant is requesting to utilize same property in a similar manner, but utilize a different zoning district, which requires and allows for an urban form, which is called urban thoroughfare. Urban thoroughfare is a little more intense and dense zoning than the community services, but still follows the same form that we have, their form-based codes. In particular, at this corner of an arterial and obviously the interstate, we felt that it was appropriate zoning use for this particular site. The City Plan 2030 designates this site as urban center area, and again, this is typified by its location adjacent to major thoroughfares with high visibility, and we felt this is a completely appropriate application for that site. We have had no objections to the proposal. We've actually had some citizens interested in what's going on. We don't have any development proposals at this time, but with the use units that are established with urban thoroughfare are similar to C2, just a different form, we feel very comfortable recommending this to you with the recommendation for approval. The Planning Commission also voted eight to zero in favor of the request.
Do the developers of the property have anything they want to say? Any kind of presentation?
Justin Jorgensen of Jorgensen Associates, representing the applicant on this, and I don't have a presentation to even get up here because you guys are on such a roll, and I don't want to get in your way, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay, all right, what questions does the Council have on this?
I don't have a question, more of a comment. I'm just, I'm excited that people are looking at this particular piece of land. I think it's a really important piece to be developed in Fayetteville, and I like the greater density, more uses for that, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
I think that this will be good for future planning purposes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment on this? See now I'll bring it back to the Council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4548 for approximately 19.61 acres located at the southeast corner of I-540 and Weddington Drive, from thoroughfare commercial to urban thoroughfare.
I move we go to the third and final reading, second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4548 for approximately 25.90 acres located at Highway 112 north of Trucker's Drive from R-PZD Park West to CS Community Services.
Chair.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from R-PZD Park West to community services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here too and made apart hereof. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1 above.
Okay, Chair.
In 2006, the City Council approved the Park West Residential Plans zoning district on about 140 acres west of Highway 112, north of where the Sands Club is located now. That project was a very large, multi-use project, 1,700 dwelling units, 900,000 square feet of commercial space, mixed-use office, retail. Obviously, that project never occurred, and construction permits were never obtained, so it has expired. This is a request for about 26 acres on the north side of that property. If this property is rezoned to their requested community services, the balance would still remain within the PZD zoning district, and as you know, staff has brought forward some of those expired PGDs to you to rezone, and this would be one we would be looking at as well. The City Plan 2030 feature land use map indicates this is a city neighborhood area, which is more densely developed than residential neighborhood areas, also provides a varying mix of non-residential and residential uses within a wide spectrum of uses. We feel that rezoning the property to community services would allow for a similar development pattern and density, as permitted by the original plan zoning district, thereby keeping with the overall policy decision that the Council made at that time, but also following the form that we've established through almost 70 acres of requests that you see here tonight. The applicants are requesting form-based codes, so we feel we're doing something right in that regard. Planning Commission also voted eight to zero on this request, and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning.
Would the applicant like to say a few words to the Council?
Thank you. My name is Bo Wilkins, and I work with Engineering Services in Springdale, and I represent Legacy National Bank for the rezoning. I really don't have anything to add to Jeremy's comments, so if y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
What questions does the Council have on this? Okay, what public comment do we have on this? Okay, bring it back to the Council.
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4552 for approximately 25.9 acres located at Highway 112 north of Trucker's Drive from R-PZD Park West to community services.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.[1521.12]
Mark.
Yes.
Okay, number 8, RZN 13-4553, Weddington Circle. An ordinance rezoning that property described in zoning petition RZN 13-4553 for approximately 6.12 acres located west of Weddington Drive and Garland Avenue from RPZD Weddington Circle to CS Community Services.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RPZD Weddington Circle to community services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Chair.
This is about 6 acres located just north of University of Arkansas campus, west of the Harps, that's located on Garland Avenue. It also has access to Weddington Drive and James Street. This property was also a planned zoning district approved in the mid-2000s. It was originally zoned RMF 24 residential multifamily and also C2 thoroughfare commercial, so it had 2 different zoning districts on it at the time. The request for the PZD was about 300 dwelling units and 10,000 square feet of professional office space and about 6,500 square feet of retail space. Again, this project did not occur with the recession, and so the property was, although this property actually began development, it never finished. City neighborhood area is the future land use plan designation on City Plan 2030 for this area, and we felt that the community services rezoning request would be compatible and appropriate within this area. It would allow the property to be developed with a variety of land uses, densities and intensities, which is consistent with the future land use designation in this area. We feel that's appropriate for a property that's bounded by high-volume arterial roadway and commercial uses and multifamily uses directly adjacent to it. Staff and the Planning Commission recommended in favor of this rezoning request to the Council.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything? Any comments they'd like to make?
No, sorry. I'm here representing the owner, Clinton Bennett.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
My name is Clinton Bennett. I'm a commercial realtor, here representing the owner, and we really don't have anything to add on what the Planning Commission has said.
Okay. What questions do we have in the Council on this? Anything? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second, go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in zoning petition RZN 13-4552 for approximately 6 acres located west of Weddington Drive and Garland Avenue, from RPZD Weddington Circle to community services.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion to second, go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in zoning petition RZN 13-4553 for approximately 6 acres located west of Weddington Drive and Garland Avenue, from RPZD Weddington Circle to community services.
Any final comments from the Council on this? Sandra, would you please call the roll.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just think we set a record for the number of items approved in the shortest amount of time for a City Council meeting.
A lot of homework.
Well, next weekend, or the next meeting, I'm giving my state of the city. I can assure you that will take us a little longer.
You have the whole resume to be efficient, right?
Yes, you do. Enjoy this one. But thank you all, that's very good work tonight. One announcement.
We've got several announcements tonight. One, due to our recent inclement weather, I want to remind citizens that our solid waste services have been suspended due to icy streets yesterday and today. We get lots of questions about why they don't run. These trucks weigh 38,000 pounds, and if they slide and hit vehicles or person, not only is it a safety of those involved, but of our staff. So services will resume tomorrow. We will be, for citizens to put out their yardways, recycling and trash containers and their normal service bots, and we will service Wednesday through Saturday. It is our intention to complete the service this week, but it may not be your normal day. It may not be when you see streets around you, because it could be access points or who we have in the areas as we're trying to coordinate that service, but our intention is to do that. Which brings me to the second item, which we received notice today of a second potential winter weather impact, Wednesday night and Thursday morning, with chances of freezing rain and ice Wednesday night and Thursday, which if that happens, could impact further delays or rescheduling of those services that we just talked about. The city is planning for that. We participate in the National Weather Service notifications, and our Transportation Division is watching that closely. We also want to remind the citizens, a second solid waste change, well, I guess a big change. We're going to be changing the name of the division from the solid waste division to recycling and trash collection, and it's because we get numerous questions about how do I get my trash and recycling picked up, and people don't necessarily associate the name of solid waste to be with that service. So we're going to call it more what it is within our new org structure that's released, and we'll have a copy for that for you in your boxes. But another change with that division is we typically in January mail out extra bag stickers. This year, we changed from a printed sticker program to an electronic tracking program. So that will save the city $17,000 in mailing and printing of extra bag stickers. Citizens will see on their utility bill a category that says extra bag available, and it'll be a number, and they all start with 4. As you have an extra bag, you set it out, and it gets deducted, and you'll watch that count go down. Electronic stickers not used will roll over from year to year, never exceeding the maximum of 8, because obviously we also are focused on diversion. For the physical stickers that have been distributed in 2013 and not used or any other prior year, the city will still take the physical sticker bags, so if you have those and put those on a bag, it will not affect or be counted within the electronic sticker tracking program. It will just be tracked manually by our drivers as we pick those bags up. And physical stickers from any year will be taken through December 31st of 2014. After that, we will only be at the electronic sticker program. That was released prior to the end of the year. It's on the city's website for the details. We just wanted to remind them about the new electronic program and that tracking number, they'll be able to see it on their utility bills. And then lastly, he's not in here, but this is the last week of service for David Jurgens, who is our Director of Utilities. David started with the city on November 2nd in 1992, so over 21 years of service and a great institutional memory with the city of Fayetteville. He's going to our home state, Virginia, to go to work for the city of Chesapeake as their Director of Utilities. David's been instrumental here at the city. He's led our water, wastewater utility, our largest single-city contract with OMI, seats